Good evening, welcome to the Wilson Central School District's Board of Education Meeting, Tuesday, December thirteenth, 2022. My name is Tim Carr, Superintendent of Schools. If you're here this evening, you have the opportunity to participate in the part of the public forum. If you're not here this evening, you're viewing online, please don't hesitate to call seven five one nine three nine nine, and that's the direct line, Mrs. Pavon, and should get your questions with the comments tab to the board or to myself. At this time, I'll turn the board meeting over to Mr. Carr.
Thank you, Superintendent Carr. Welcome. Please join me in the public room.
The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the wisdom of liberty and justice.
Board members, item B, approved, United States of America, November eighth, 2022, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item C is six seven, charge of education, October twenty twenty two, November fourteen nine eight, zero eight three two zero two thirty six, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Under two personnel resignations, A, accept the resignation of Thomas J. Bya, elementary teacher effective July one, twenty twenty three, for retirement purposes, can I have a motion? Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Blue line, Mr. Bya, as customary in June, the rest of this year's retiree. Item B, except the resignation of Jonathan Gould, laborer affected November sixteen, twenty twenty two, for personal reasons, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item C, accept the resignation of Mackenzie Odo, type S, effective December two, twenty twenty two, for personal reasons, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Sorry. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item D, accept the resignation of Christopher Genies, varsity lacrosse coach, effective October twenty eighth, twenty twenty two, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Such a quiet room, Mr. Carr. It's bright and quiet, very sterile. Item E, accept the resignation of Mike Esbell, as modified lacrosse coach, effective November nine, twenty twenty two, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Under three personnel appointments, item A, approved substitute teacher Tyler Stevenson, substitute teacher has met New York State fingerprint clearance, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Harrow, Mr. Fisher, going out instead of four seconds.
Well, good evening again, board members. Thanks for letting me introduce Keith Spate. Keith grew up in East Harlem, New York City. He moved to Western New York during COVID to be with his mom and help her during the pandemic. While here, he met his wife, who grew up in Wilson, so needless to say, Keith is now the president of Wilson. Keith did an excellent job on his interview. Besides having a schooling background and past jobs in the educational field, he showed us that he has great personality, he's got good morals in his character. He has been a sub-labor force for a few weeks now, doing awesome job. He's learning quickly, and I think with the board's approval, he'll make a great addition to the facilities channel.
Thank you, Mr. Harrow. Item B, approved non-instructional substitute employee, Keith Spate, effective to November twenty one, twenty twenty two, non-instructional substitute, has met New York State fingerprint clearance, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item C, Keith Spate is full-time laborer, effective December fourteen, twenty twenty two, job group seven, step one, with benefits per the CSA agreement, has met New York State fingerprint clearance, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Welcome, all. Item D, approved, right, varsity, varsity, boys lacrosse coach, in the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three season, has coached his salary, scheduled step one for the WTA agreement, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item E, Daniel Lasinski, as unpaid volunteer assistant coach for varsity wrestling for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three winter season, under the direct supervision of Coach Michael Carollo, can I have a motion? Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Under four other A, approved, tax more adjustment for the twenty twenty two, twenty three fiscal year due assessment and calculation for American debt.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item D, student teacher, Daniel Johnson, from Niagara, varsity, varsity, teaching at a high school with Christine Waters, social studies teacher, from January seventeen, twenty twenty three, through March eight, twenty twenty two, state clearance, cleared with New York State. Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Under C, student teacher, Jacqueline Stikney, from SUNY Brockport, student teaching at a high school with Aiden McGowan, physical education teacher, from March thirteen, twenty twenty three, through May ten, twenty twenty three, approval for president, cleared with New York State Education, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Guess we're putting him right out there, Mrs. Pavon. Item D, what's the council December twenty seven, twenty twenty two, Board of Education, what session, could a meeting become necessary prior to Christmas recess or after, between then and January, I know it's not part of the agenda, the Board of Education will schedule a meeting, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Looking at Policy Six, A, approved CPSD, CSD, five oh four, meaning minutes, and IEP recommendations stated, December thirteen, twenty twenty two, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Under seven conference requests, A, approved conference requests, B through G, through E, December thirteen, twenty twenty two, agenda, can I have a motion? I'm sorry, second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Superintendent, under conference reports, A, thank you President Waters, the first one actually is mine, and I'm gonna do my best, as long as my voice will hold out. Rural Schools' Winter Retreat was in Saratoga, two weeks ago, I believe it was, at this point. I found the Rural Schools' Conference as board members, my favorite conferences to go to, because, as we've all been to different concerts, with conferences, the New York State School Boards, I attend some of the miscast ones, a lot of times you do breakout sessions, and you get just a choice of rooms you can go into, many times when you go in there, there's a vendor, and then there's somebody speaking, it seems like they're working together to try and sell you something, those kind of conferences, breakout sessions, trying to create something. The Rural Schools doesn't seem to do that, they seem to bring different programs to their conferences to try to highlight, the one that, there's two that stuck out, one was the YMCA Youth Government Panel, which I grabbed some information on, at some point will show the high school principal, and hopeful of getting, get some of our kids interested in it. It really has to do with a group of students that take up a cause, and they present a bill, and some of the students act as legislature members, they actually go to Albany, and they sit in chairs, the different senators and senators sit in to, and they have conversations around the bill that they want to present, they have to defend it, and then it has to be brought forward as a motion to the Department of Labor Program through the YMCA. So, those kind of things, I think are very interesting. Had a great conversation, you know, talk with our Commissioner of Education, she actually was there, she wasn't on Zoom.
Oh, good.
Which was excellent, they had a chance to ask her some questions, and, you know, she really hit hard on, there's going to be some changes to graduation requirements in the next year or so, that's going to be brought up at the Regents level, and also at the state ed level, so we can expect some changes to what the graduation requirements are going to be for our high school students. So, those are the two, there's a number of different things, board members, that I enjoy, but for some reason, I go to this conference, I walk away with deep pages and knowing some things I wanted to tell somebody, so I thought it was a pretty impressive conference. I also have the pleasure of reading Mrs. Taylor, our elementary art teacher, went to a conference, creating art with Google Tools, by Daniel Wade, junior U of OSIS, and she said at this conference, we explored a variety of Google Tools, and Sheets Draw, Google Docs, QR codes, and the possibilities they offer in alignment with the New York State Arts Council. This took place at the Darwin Martin House in Buffalo, we found inspirational inspiration in Frank Lloyd Wright's design for our activities, we used Google Sheets to create pixel art based on the art glass windows in the house, we used some simple coding via conditional formatting to create palette where we could color in the pixel squares simply by typing in a letter. Using Google Draw, we participated in creating shapes, and then drew geometric shapes over a photograph of our choice to create the mosaic piece, and then we had to try and find colors in the palette to correspond with what we saw in the photograph. We also learned how to use a QR code to share documents, and if you haven't used a QR code yet, open your camera app and tablet, smartphone, focus on the QR code above, and you can click on the panel. So, board members, she said thank you for allowing me to attend this conference, it was very informative and refreshing to connect with the art educators in that area. I also have a conference report from our English, three of our English teachers, Brooke Smith, Rosie Supert, and Katie Henzel attended the Western New York Network of English Teachers Conference at Buffalo State College, presentations that they went to included building up our identity, build confidence, and write a joy, dream visions and futures, cultivating students' genius through literacy, and stemming the ELA classroom. Specifically, they attended the workshops that focused on putting together and creating poetry unit by incorporating guest poets, providing support through the school library, incorporating STEM in middle school and high school English classrooms. Key takeaways when it comes to thinking us from the conference, thinking outside the box, incorporating hands-on activities, more work it takes to set up an activity, the less than the work enthusiastic the students can be, making literacy equitable for everyone, making literacy accessible to minorities, marginal groups, different approaches to students that are, that you're teaching, when students connect with poetry when you're studying, they see value, and more likely the ones to write their own. Reading, studying poems, teach about history, and the presence, and the presence is important. And that is their conference report. I believe we have, Mr. Galbich is gonna do a quick report on his conference at the Niagara Frontier Industrial Education Council.
Hi, good evening, board members. November second, I attended the Niagara Frontier Industry Education Council, called Forum, at the Columbus Bank, Los Alamos. Focus of the forum was centered on conversations about reconnecting education with the question of New York industry. There were two main speakers at this conference or forum. Dr. Erickson Mehlens, who is the vice president under role and management at SUNY Erie, was the first speaker. He focused his conversation on his non-traditional path through high school and college, that led to his current position. Things that he emphasized were the importance of taking advantage of opportunities, learning from mistakes, and persevering through challenges, those are all skills and a mindset that our students and employees need to have in order to be successful. Second speaker was Dr. William J. Baravito, who is the president of LCC. He provided an overview of community colleges in Washington, New York, from where they started to where they're now. Talked about a number of ways in which community colleges are a critical link between students and employers, and also discussed the strengths of community colleges, as well as areas that they could look to improve. Finally, we broke through the presentations, there was a Q and A session, which was actually relatively beneficial, just allowed the speakers to back deeper in their conversations and hear some, you know, questions that were being asked from those that were in attendance. So overall, it was a always agreed forum, just about, you know, half day. It was beneficial to just be part of the conversation and kind of get a little bit of land of where that topic might be going in the future. So, thank you for allowing me to have a seat with them.
Thank you. Amy Sealy is gonna read her conference report on Work-life Balance, it's a journey not a race.
On Wednesday, November thirtieth, I attended a dinner with a speaker through NISAWA, which is New York State Association for Women in Administration. While I'm not an administrator, many of the themes and discussions presented through this association are topics that I am familiar with as the AAS facilitator. The title of the event was Work-life Balance, It's a Journey Not a Race. Dr. Erin Meehan Farabin, Assistant Superintendent for P-16 Instructional Programs at Wayne Finger Lake OSIS, shared her unique story, which chronicled her journey into leadership and how she embraced that journey as her own. She then engaged the participants by providing some famous quotes and asking the table groups to focus on the meaning of the quotes and share any personal experiences that resonated with them. So the first quote was, "The race is long, and in the end, it is only with yourself", by Mary Smith, I believe. And we basically came to the conclusion that, that some of us feel a certain amount of pressure to succeed, and that pressure is mainly put on us by ourselves and not by others. The next quote was, "Don't draw a small box around possibilities in your career." So, that boiled down to be open to explore opportunities and avoid limiting yourself. But their quote, "Your ability to lead is not defined by your role or position. Find ways every day to make everything around you better." So basically, a title or degree doesn't necessarily define a leader. Leaders exist through motivating others to reach individual or common goals. And lastly, and this is kind of been a tough one for me lately, being in the position that I'm in, and, and no one has made me feel this way, it's something that I feel myself, but no one can make you feel inferior without your consent, and that's a famous quote by Eleanor Roosevelt. We have the choice to allow the negative comments others say to us about us, about our efforts, to get us down or second guess ourselves. So, if we let them, we don't need to let anyone do that. So, once again, I'd like to thank the WTA and board for the opportunity to attend the workshop. It allowed for not working with other female educational leaders, and also to share experiences, triumphs, and difficulties, while igniting a spark of encouragement in an often challenging endeavor. So, thank you.
Jim Pavon, our district clerk, attended the Esbo Conference?
I did. On November fourteenth through fifteenth, I attended the Esbo twenty twenty two School Business Management Workshop. Some of the key sessions I attended included the keynote speaker Dante Shannon. His speech was titled, "One Exec's Journey From Pride to Fresh." He shared his personal story about how his physical and mental exhaustion from work led him to learn how to maintain balance, set realistic goals, and set healthy professional boundaries while being a productive leader. I also attended the district clerk meet and greet, gave me a chance to network with other clerks, the district clerk two oh one, that gave me a better understanding of the clerk's role and responsibilities. I walked through the trade show, I visited many exhibit booths, I attended the tips and tricks for Google Drive, legal updates for clerks, leadership and advocacy as it applies to a district clerk, the annual budget vote and school board election, that was a great session that included guidance on the school budget vote and election, a timeline to follow with deadlines to be aware of, and how to handle ballot and voter issues that may arise on the date of the vote. Also, thriving as a woman in business, this discussion included the barriers and obstacles that women experience in the workplace, and how to overcome obstacles, and another session titled, "Policy Pulse." Thank you for allowing me to attend this conference.
Other nine, this facility requests aid, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Under ten, board members, information on hold. Rusty Stewart, do you have anything to add?
No, only to let Mrs. Pavon know if you're attending the legislative breakfast.
Are you having a hold of that? My family.
You don't speak, right?
Yeah.
You guys. Student trustee Miller, can you have a report for us?
Uh, yes. On November twenty second, twenty twenty two, members of the high school student council delivered non-perishable food and a check for seventy dollars to the Wilson Food Pantry and Karen's Share Food Pantry in Grantsville. On November twenty third, people tailgated before, before school for the Bills game, and students and teachers played cornball and ancient bits, and it was very fun. A lot of people were there, and the Bills' Elvis number one fan was there, people were excited to get pictures of him. Later on in the day was the turkey trot. I did not participate myself because it's for the middle school, but I talked to people about it, and the entire middle school and some elementary kids ran on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving break. The kids did a mile loop in the town and were led by the fire company and supervised by the middle school teachers. Multiple high school students and alumni also volunteered to direct the racers and help with the timing and scoring. The winners of each grade, girls and boys, received a T-shirt and a group picture was taken during the race. It was fun, well-attended, and a competitive race, and although costumes were not required, many kids did wear them. On December seventh, was the senior citizen breakfast, and there was a big turnout for it, I think about a hundred people, and it was great to have it after not having it for a few years because of COVID. Many students participated in it, whether setting up, or cleaning, or making little gifts or placemats. And then after the breakfast, the whole kindergarten class in auditorium, which was very cute. On December eighth, Teddy from the Anchor News Wilson Channel interviewed me about my position on the school board, and he was very professional, and the interview is available to watch for anyone, I think.
He's so pretty.
He's so cute. Later that night was the high school winter concert, and I attended it, and it was amazing. There is some undeniable talent in the music program, it's awesome to see. On December eighth, I was told that Mr. Bya, my soccer coach for many years, would be retiring next year, and I watched my whole team cry, showing you how great of a coach he was. And Ms. Taylor, his assistant, had a positive impact on all of our lives, and she truly helped the team so much, and it's just great to see, like, the amazing coaches that we have here. They just affect us in so many positive ways. On December fifteenth, there is a blood drive, and many people are excited to give blood, and it's so inspiring to see that, because I could never do that myself, because I cry every time I have to get a shot at the doctors. I don't know how people do it. On December twenty second, twenty twenty two, is the annual Christmas sweater concert. If you look in the hallway, there's tons of posters of Mr. Nuggets and Mr. Stack being silly in their sweaters, and it's just a fun event to consider having the Christmas spirit for break. Thank you.
Anybody have a question why we wanted to have a student board member on here? That's the reason why we had John Madison.
Thank you.
We wanted to know, I mean, board needs to know what's going on in this school. I mean, you took three quarters of my report away, and I'm next, so.
Thank you.
President Waters, and the rest of the board are very happy with that. So I'm just gonna touch on, she mentioned the senior citizen breakfast, and I just want to thank everybody. Yes, Madison was interviewed, and I was on here, but sixth grader, Mr. Andrews, has been quite busy interviewing a number of people around the district. The interviews kind of started down two, three years ago with the athletic department, interviewing coaches as the seasons went on. And Mrs. Maher and Mr. Andrews took up the cause this year, created the high school, middle school, and it's just been a head. Not only did they interview Madison recently, but at the elementary school, they have vending machine, that when you put money in vending machine, whatever you put in that vending machine, it sends out a book, so it's kind of neat. So, there's those interviews, I believe around the district's YouTube page?
Yep.
Awesome. So, please, there's got to be at least six or seven of them already that he's done this year, plus the support ones, so it's great to sort of get to know what's going on in the district. Board members, I had a conversation at the Rural Schools' Conference with Bob Hartz, who is involved with Super Eval, which is the program that evaluates, right now evaluates, maybe, but they have other components. As you know, one of our policies, we're supposed to evaluate something a year. So, Bob Hartz is gonna come to us on February workshop, the date, I think it's the twenty eighth off the top of my head, but he'll be here for the February workshop to sort of, you know, do a little presentation of what that looks like, and if we decide to move forward. Today and tomorrow are the sixth annual holiday luncheon in Wilson for our staff members. Myself and our head cook at the high school, Brenda Johannes, spent Monday filling the halls with beautiful spells of spaghetti sauce, and today, at the high school, middle school, the staff was treated to not only as pasta lunch, but desserts and salad and all the things. I want to thank Sue and Brenda and her staff, our home made kids, and our home made teachers, I don't know. I don't think I missed anybody, so everybody, our facilities department for helping, second, because it's quite an undertaking to take on, especially with anything else that's going on for the holidays, so thank you. So thank you. And I think, um, that's it. That's our talk.
Yeah. I can be sure of it, that's a fact. So, um, I know it's been said many times throughout the hour or so, that we've been together, but, um, the senior citizen breakfast, I wasn't able to be here this, this year, I was in last week. But, um, it's, it's, it's really wonderful about, if, if you're not aware of the purpose for it, Mr. Rogers kind of just holoscarried it many years ago. In the WTA, um, Association, as well as CSEA, they carry on that tradition. And it's really to thank most in the community that, that especially are on fixed incomes and find it very hard to support the school district with their school tax bill. I have trophies of working adult, I can't imagine being in their, in their shoes. But I really appreciate that being a very well-attended event. I'm sorry that I missed it. Thank you for everybody that was involved with that, putting that together. Mrs. Paul, your staff, Mr. Herman, your staff, and, and everybody, and all the kids that volunteered, um, to put that on because I think, I, I really truly believe they appreciate it. And it, and it gives them a reason to come in. If they don't get a reason to come in and watch sports and concerts and things like that, to get a little bit of flavor of that, and it's, it's truly great. And, uh, thank you, everybody. It was part of what I would have said there, I would have said that if I was there, but, um, it's, it's, it's really great that. Board members, I don't have anything else this evening. Do you have anything to add? No, uh, we'll open up for a public forum if you'd like to, trust me. Please state your name and address prior to keeping it going.
Hi, my name is Jill from, uh, Granthamville. I'm here representing my parents, um, who already been here tonight, are unable to make it. Over the past two years, uh, once we, as a group, began communicating our very strong feelings regarding masks and social distancing, um, and quarantining approaches that the district was taking, we appreciated the approach that the, that the board took by writing the letters and speaking to the representatives from our area. Uh, not very many of the districts did that until after it was already started, so we appreciated that. And we hope that that will be the same going forward. While we know that there are not currently mandates in place, um, we felt it's important to be proactive in reaching out to the board now. We want masks to stay optional. Masking our children will only cause more issues as the time goes on. Building up their immune systems will be even harder when masked. My children have never been so sick in their life this year. Crazy. If the COVID vaccine becomes part of the required immunizations for public schools, many of us are more than prepared to take your children out of the public school system. We feel very humbled about this, and hopefully we'll, uh, as we can take action. Again, we understand that there are no mandates in place, but we wanted to state again that, um, this is not a rule.
Especially when recently, uh, Commissioner of Health and New York State Education, Commissioner of Joint Order, I chose not to share that with the district because I'm choosing not to listen to it right now. But I know other districts sent out, um, you know, here's the recommendations, so optional. But, um, yeah, let's start to make some new decisions.
That's why we wanted to.
And I believe last year we did do a resolution for vaccination in school. Very soon, we'll start the tour of legislators for budget bases. And I, I'll make sure that those conversations are heard. One of the problems we do have is that, not a problem, it's good for us in the fact that our, our legislators in this area are on board, but not all legislators are in the same, the same home. So, but the more they hear the message, the more large groups, PTA groups, superintendent groups, school board groups, and mysterious groups keep pushing from the governor's office. That's what I'll be doing. Thank you, Jill.
Thank you for bringing that up. Believe it or not, I was gonna mention it, but I, I had a feeling that's why some of you are here. So, um, you know, I don't want to make this part of the conversation, number one, I agree with you wholeheartedly. Number two, um, you've heard me say on many occasions, if you've attended meetings, advocacy works, and I encourage that. You know, it, it is a political lightning rod, um, both of those things. And, and I think, you know, I don't want to get all tinfoil hat or, um, political, but you can say what you want. Boy, there's an awful lot of people that were vaccinated, got sick with COVID. So, um, I'll leave it at that, but I do appreciate you coming. I appreciate your voices, and I would encourage those voices elsewhere outside these four walls. Thank you. Anybody else?
Timmy Guinness, Farrow. Just commenting on Mr. Bya's retirement, um, it's a huge loss for our district. So man, sorry, um, he put thirty years into teaching and soccer, my kids. So, uh, I just wanted to be known that, uh, to man's point, it hurts. Wish him nothing but the best, but, uh, he's a huge part of this district.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis, for your, and, and especially not for your, only your kindness, but for your support over many years. Appreciate it. Anyone else?
Sorry, I forgot, um, and I will talk about Mr. Bya at another time, when I can collect my thoughts later in, in June, probably. But, um, one of the things I did forget that we should probably mention here is that Dr. Win, our former superintendent, did receive the Section Six Hall of Fame induction. Was that last week or the week of the board?
That's right.
Just so everybody on the board is aware, I know many of you worked with Dr. Win, um, and he's obviously still a, a community member here.
Thank you. I should add that to my superintendent's report.
Yeah, so it was a nice night. I, um, Mr. Johnson was there, um, one of his sons came, his brother, and his nephew came, and, um, I'm going to point out the other guy, the principal before Mr. Johnson, that retired, I think, that got Mr. Johnson in that.
Bruce, right?
There you go. I had no idea before, he was also there. So it was a nice little group, and, and of course, um, you know, when I got there, he said, "Am I supposed to do a speech?" Yeah. I mean, of course, knocked it out of the fire without any notes or anything like that. Um, I just wanted to mention that during this time. I forgot my, my report.
I, I did place the picture of the two of you standing next to each other in board members' booth.
Oh, good, thanks.
It was an SOS.
And it was an SOS.
So I did let the board know, but I figured it was good that I had a public recognition.
Yep. All good, thanks.
Anybody else? We do not yet need for executives, Sasha and I will entertain a motion to retract. Second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed to this? We're enjoying the free holiday season.
Thank you.